All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three, Tom Water City Council Work Session. Calling the meeting to order, and then I will start out, I believe that we have everybody here. I'm just double checking. I believe that.
Eileen excuse?
Yes, and I was just gonna say, I believe Eileen is excuse this evening. So all other council members are present. So anything before we get started, if not, I will jump into our first item. And I will turn it over to our city administrator, Lisa Parks, this is together, the host homes pilot project and stay home. Program project update, so I will turn it over to you, Lisa.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members and anybody out there who's watching. So recently, the city partnered with Together for a two-year pilot program that was intended to house unaccompanied youth in our community. So the goal of the program was to create safe, short-term housing options for these young people by matching them up with host families within the community. The pilot program is completed at the end of August in terms of the contract. As a component of the, one of the deliverables of that contract was that Together would provide the council members with a final update on the program and its outcomes. And so Tammy Mason-Lathrop is the Together Host Homes Director, and she is here tonight to provide that report. And I'll turn it over to her.
Perfect, thank you so much. I have a little PowerPoint, so let me share my screen. All right, well, again, thank you so much for your time, and I'm really excited to share this update with you because as you are probably aware of previous updates, things moved a little bit slow in the beginning. As mentioned, my name is Tammy Mason-Lathrop, I do use she/her pronouns, I'm the Host Homes Director at Together. Just as a reminder, for the Host Homes Program, our vision and mission and values. Our vision is a community where all high school students have a safe and affirming home. Mission that the Host Homes Program would provide safe, short-term hosted housing for unaccompanied high school students experiencing housing instability. Values as an organization at Together, we value equity, community, and systems change. So, yeah, again, you know, we piloted the program, it took about a little over a year to develop, and then we launched it in early two thousand and twenty-two. We received our first student referrals in the Tumwater School District in February and April of two thousand and twenty-two. And we did match both of those students in August of the same year. For a while, though, we only had just the two students at Tumwater. We did house another student from the North Thurston Public School District in the fall. And again, I think that as we launched, there was a lot of support from the city and the Tumwater School District, which was amazing. And our other program at Together Community Schools was a huge partner in helping us identify the unaccompanied students that may be eligible for the program, as well as knowing those students, so having like a warm handoff so that the students would feel more comfortable about talking about their situation and being open to the Host Homes Program. In this last quarter, so from January of twenty-three until now, we have matched and housed seven students. Three of those seven are in the Tumwater School District. Five of those seven are kinship matches or like previously known relationships. And our program is running with three full-time staff members, myself as the director, we have a lead case manager. And then we just brought on a bilingual Spanish-speaking case manager. I think the biggest, you know, areas I in terms of, we had identified about around ten students at the high school age in the Tumwater School District. Each year that we would potentially be able to house and match, I think that what we just didn't anticipate was the time it would take for us to really grow the program to a point where people could trust and believe that the program was going to work. And luckily, like I said, with the first two students that we have in house, we had a great host family that was able to take in those students, previous foster care parent had adult children as well, so they were kind of a wonderful pilot host family for our pilot program. And we learned a lot, I think that we did a lot of adjusting, course correcting as we navigated where the areas we needed focus on to really grow the program. And some of that is really just getting into the schools, showing our faces, getting to know the staff at, in the high schools. And what also really helped was when we were able to put another community schools manager in the Cascadia High School. And so a couple of great success stories were that two of our students graduated from high school this year. The beginning of the year, they were at risk of not graduating, but they ended up getting housed. And both of them received both scholarships to Saint Martins and South Puget Sound Community College. One student in the Tumwater School District ended up reunifying with his mother. And our community schools manager was able to help them with some rental support to get them in their own apartment together, which was very cool to see. The main challenges we've identified really have to do with students' mental and behavioral health issues that are just beyond the scope of what both the program and the volunteer host families can manage. We did try to hire on a contract licensed mental health counselor to provide support both to our program staff to train them and to the hosts, but that person just ended up not being able to commit to the program, so we're again going to be looking for another person. But as you guys might may know, it's been kind of challenging to find a counselor that can commit to hours. Some difficulties which we anticipated, we're getting parent permission. I think in general, you know, there was only a couple of parents that we were unable to get their permission from. Some of the things that I do think helped us with the other seven students that we housed and get their permission were that, you know, we identified early on that since the state of Washington requires one of the contracts to be notarized, that was a barrier. Some families just were not able to take the time to, you know, meet at a notary. So I was previously certified, so I just got recertified and I can now travel to any parent and student to meet them where they're at, which was very helpful, because that contract also does need to get updated every six months. Again, yeah, we were just a lot slower in growing than we anticipated. I do feel like at this point, though, you know, even with the slow start and the the slow, the lower number than we anticipated, the program's a really strong place. So that the pilot, in my opinion, is a success, because now we're in a place where both the school districts we've worked in, Tumwater, North Thurston, really do see us as a viable option for students. And we're talking to counselors, we're talking to navigators, we're talking to McKinney Vento liaisons on a pretty consistent basis, getting invited to their meetings, learning about the needs and strategies on how to to work with the students and and match them with the appropriate host family. I think also staffing has just been a challenge. We've lost several staff, but again, that's kind of in every area across the nation. So with that, it's just something that we, you know, really want to find the right people to come on board because of the trauma that the students have experienced and just really easing them into a place where they can build that trust with their case manager, the youth case manager, and start to really identify independent living skills and goals that they want to work on. So I think that we've been successful in that aspect. So these are just some of the things that the students have done while they've been in the program. You know, four students, we helped get their government ID cards, one student completed driver's ed. Three students, we helped set up bank accounts because they didn't have one. All students completed the school year with passing grades or better. Three students received awards at the end of the school year. Some were for, one was in the Tumwater School District, was in the the Vet Tech Program and received a certificate of recognition for their willingness to always help out with other fellow students if they are absent to step into their roles and responsibilities. We helped three students get enrolled into counseling. And all the students worked on budgeting, and what was helpful with that was they do receive a monthly stipend. It's fifty dollars a month, and they get that in a check, so you know, they get to learn the whole process of getting the ID, getting the check, signing up for the bank account, depositing their money, and then if they have a cellphone, being able to track what they're spending online. We've had a couple of students and hosts exit our program, and they were lovely enough to provide some feedback for us. Both the hosts really were excited and felt like the program's support and response time exceeded their expectations. The case management wraparound services, especially in Tumwater with our community schools program with the 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 true wraparound, so you have the community schools managers in the schools, and then the host homes case managers outside of school hours were super helpful in improving behaviors and building trust with adults. They also found that the teen meetings that we held once a month with the the student host and case manager were really helpful in building their communication and accountability for all parties involved. The host found that the financial support, they are allowed to submit some reimbursements every month, was really helpful. It's it's up to three hundred dollars a month, but kind of identifying that if there's a larger cost, that that was more challenging to find, but the program has some funding that can go directly towards that from other friends that we've been awarded. Some of the student feedback. That they, the students, you know, they're teenagers, so they kind of felt like the host should expect a longer amount of time for them to get to know each other and get used to a new environment. Students reported that because of the program, they did feel like they could focus more on school versus what where they were going to stay or for how long. The number one request from students, as you can imagine, were cell phones. We did have some donations from the community and were able to get those students connected with cell phones and service. And yes, the students, you know, of course, prefer to be matched with hosts who live within their school district. So initially, when we developed the program and are, you know, what we projected again was that for the city of Tumwater, Tumwater School District, that we would match ten students per year. You know, we didn't match anybody the first year, we just matched this past year, and there were three in Tumwater. Our intentions were to develop and foster professional relationships with community partners to ensure the continuity and care and service provision, and I feel very good that we have strengthened our partnerships with all of these nonprofits in the area. We are part of the Thurston County Anchor Community Initiative Cohort. CYS, that I'm sure a lot of people are familiar with, has sent us for referrals. Wise Program, Catholic Community Services, has sent us a couple of referrals. Legal Counsel for Youth and Children has worked with a couple of our students. And both the school districts, you know, like I said, have really built trust with the Host Homes Program and 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 use us frequently to table at their events, come to their meetings, and talk about potential students. We also had built a very strong relationship as an organization with Osho Cultural Center in Tumwater. And, you know, that's kind of the end of it, I really just wanted to take the time to say thank you so much for your support. I think that, you know, again, piloting a program, it's it's a wild ride. Not for the faint of heart, but I I feel really good about where we are now. And of course, that was because of community partners, the support of the city of Tumwater, really believing in this type of housing and opportunities that could potentially help young people to not end up in housing instability situations as adults. And I I see that in real time happening. So again, even though we didn't quite hit the number that we had hoped, I think that with the support of the 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 funds we received, we have built a good, strong program that's just really gaining momentum now and and ready to take off. Right. Yes. Lieta?
Thank you, Mayor, is it okay if I go? Just checking, Tammy, I appreciate that update, I want to, you know, listening to you talk, I'm wondering what's next for you in this program? And have you adjusted your goals and your numbers? Tell us what's next.
Yeah, absolutely, so what's next? I mean, my big goal is to be able to go countywide. But for right now, the the, you know, the next goal would be to work in the Olympia School District to really just, you know, have that the three districts, main districts, all able to access this program. And yes, we've definitely adjusted our numbers for Tumwater School District, you know, it's they're still projecting around the same amount of unaccompanied students. I think now with the experience and information that I have, we have to realize that just because they're unaccompanied doesn't mean that they're going to want to be in the program. Because this program truly only works with their buy-in, and that's what I talk to students about all the time is that, you know, we highlight the great things about it, but it's only going to work and operate if you want to be in it. So with that said, you know, for for this next school year in Tumwater, my goal now is to house seven students in the Tumwater School District. We, you know, again, like the community schools managers in there, they they hold this great amount of information and care for the students they work with. So truly, they're the ones that are really bridging those referrals over to us.
Councilmember, Al Tassier?
Thanks, and thanks for the presentation, Tammy. This is great work. I mean, seven young people who would otherwise be living unaccompanied on the streets, I mean, that's like saving seven lives, right? I guess my question has to do with, I think, a comment you made about having a young person being placed in a household, it's in the same school district or same same area. If it was opened up to Olympia, and that that would really probably open up a lot more hosts in their homes, to where you might have greater participation. But under the McKinney Vento Act, if a young person is experiencing homelessness in which they don't have the regular nighttime place to sleep under the federal definition, wouldn't they be considered homeless, and then the school district would have to provide transportation services, even if they're staying outside of district?
Yeah.
For that young person?
Yes.
Are they not, if they're in this program, are they not homeless because they have a regular place to sleep now, it's just a host home?
Chicken or egg? No, thank you for explaining that, yes, they do, and they do get transported, but I, like you mentioned, I think that the 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 situation being like, we had a student that's at, was at Tumwater High School, but the host family was in like North Lacey, so they did get transported, so they could stay at the same high school, but it was just they were never able to be like very close to, you know, hang out with their friends, like it was more of an effort to have to do those types of things.
Got it, got it, and my follow-up question I have. You you mentioned that the the notary public portion is kind of an impediment. Are there other structural issues that, you know, these are the rules by which you have to follow because state law lays out how these things work, we would have limited ability to impact those, but certainly could work with our legislative delegation on changes. Are there other structural components that are a challenge in your eyes that maybe we could recruit our legislators to advocate on on our behalf?
You know, that's such a great question, and I apologize, my dog started barking again, but I think, you know, that one is truly the one that is the biggest barrier, and the the fact that we do have to update it every six months, not that that's like a huge deal, but as you can imagine, depending on where a parent is, and several of our parents are struggling with mental health and addiction challenges and don't even live in the area. Or, you know, we were, we would, we weren't able to enroll a couple of students because they never officially were, had a legal guardian, and one parent was deceased, and the other parent was, they didn't know where. So those are the, that's truly the the number one issue at hand is just getting that parental permission and, you know, having having to explain that to the the students who are excited about the program and want to be in it, you know. And that's why we've been partnering with LCYC so that they can work with an attorney to 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 see if there's anything that they can do to help them, and I know that, you know, the LCYC is learning a lot about our program as we're partnering to see where they can support the the students to be in the program.
Great, thank you, that's very helpful.
Yeah. Tammy, can you define LCYC for me, please?
Yeah, Legal Counsel for Youth and Children.
I see microphones off, Councilor Kathy, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you for coming, Tammy, it's always good to hear hear these things, and we have a tendency to judge programs by numbers rather than by lives, so I appreciate this. The question I have is, who else are some of your major or consistent donors to this program, have you been able to broaden that out some, or how how does that work?
Yeah, we were able to secure a couple of large grants, one through the Department of Commerce, and the other through building changes, and those are the two of the largest funders that that we have that are secured through two thousand and twenty-five.
Good. You know, this comment about, you know, one of the things the students want is to live in the school district. I can understand that totally, because they they go home and that's not the house that, you know, if they've had students or whatever that went to, you know, North Thurston or went to Olympia High School or something, they're they're not as enthusiastic, maybe, I'm sure they are, but but I I can see that as a high school student, it'd be great to live around where other people are interested in the same city and the same school and activities, so that's a, that's a good goal.
Yeah, it feels very far when you're a teenager and don't drive.
Oh, yeah, oh, you've gone to another land, you know, yeah. Thanks so much.
Well, congratulations, Tammy, looks like you exceeded expectations. Met your goals, so this is about community, just saving lives, and and congratulations to you, job well done.
Thank you. We thank all of you, I mean, it truly is about community, and I think that it takes a community talking to each other, identifying a problem, and trying something new like this, be willing to take a risk. And so I applaud, you know, our community for for seeing that vision and giving it a go, because we have to do something.
Councilmember, Gabby, your microphone is off, did you have anything or? No, okay, perfect. All right, so thank you so much, Tammy, for coming this evening. This is great information, and in, this is a very important service, so.
Thank you so much for your time and for your contribution and support, you guys, appreciate it.
Yeah. All right, the next item is discussion of park naming, and Chuck Denny is up next.
Thank you, Mayor Council, it's great to be here, talking tonight about our, how we named city parks after we build new parks. This also applies to naming public facilities, so you know, when we put this together, it was originally thought that not only would it name parks, but it may name, say, if we give a name to a community center, or you want to name the operations center, or you want to do something else like that, this is a process that could be used. So policy of the process, it's outlined in your packet. Parks generally named after a couple of different things, it could be the neighborhood it's in, its geographic location, or how it had been used prior to becoming one of our facilities. It could be something historical or cultural attribute about the site. It could be named after an individual who maybe donated money or land to construct the facility. It could be named after an individual who has contributed outstanding civic service, Jim Brown Park would be a good example of that one. Or an organization has donated a significant piece of property or a significant amount of money to create, say, a park. Say Home Depot gave us several million dollars and said we want a park, we might name, they might stipulate that they wanted it named Tumwater's Home Depot Park. And so you would have to evaluate whether that trade-off was valuable to you or not. We don't normally name facilities after people that are still alive, although we did in the case of Jim Brown. So that's just not normally. And a big part of this is public participation and getting input from the people. Depending on the park, a neighborhood park, we would really solicit to the people who live in that area. A community park would be more citywide, I would tell you, you know, we just went through this with Kindred Park, and what our staff did there was we sent out a mailer to that region, several neighborhoods. The Preserve, obviously, but several neighborhoods outside of the Preserve, since that park is meant to to serve more than just the Preserve, we're serving that section of Tumwater with that neighborhood park, so we sent out direct mailers. We also did social media Facebook posts, and we had it on the city's website. Social media, city's website goes citywide, and we take suggestions from really anybody in the city, and we add it to the list for consideration. So the procedure, after we, after we collect all the suggestions from residents in the city is I go through it and make sure there aren't any crude or inappropriate suggestions, or somebody just trying to be ridiculous ridiculously funny, that doesn't typically happen. And then all the names go to the Parks and Recreation Commission. They, following the policy that you have before you, they go through the names and discuss that back and forth and come up with their top selection for what they think the new facility should be called. And then they forward that to you as the city council for your consideration. And you can agree to accept their recommendation, or you can ask that they consider another name that was submitted by the public, or as in the case with the Shute Valley Park, you can come up with a totally new name and and say that's what you would like it to be, you then send by this policy, you then send that back back to the Parks and Recreation Commission and ask them to consider your recommendation, which to date they have always done, and send it back to you for final approval. And then we have a name, and that and that's how the process has gone. So there was some discussion about the process as we went through it for Kindred Park in the Preserve neighborhood. So I'm coming to you tonight to get any input or suggestions that you might have for how we do this, any changes you think need to be made. And one last thing I would add is that, you know, the last couple of parks, we have waited until the park was actually completed before we did the naming process. And I think it was Councilmember Kathy who brought up the last time we talked about this. That that makes it kind of confusing for several years, as we get used to calling the park whatever, we talk about it so much during construction. T Street Park is a great example, which is still kind of T Street Park in my mind, because that's what we called it for years as we were planning it and building it, and now it's just Shute's Valley Park. So you really have to kind of think about that, so we're going to start naming our parks before we build them or at the beginning of construction, so that by the time the park's done, everybody's got that set in their mind, that's what this park is. So that's that's really, that's really a procedure change for us internally, and doesn't really apply to this policy as far as timing of the naming. But that's one change we're going to make. But that's one change we're gonna make. So with that, I would, I would give it back to you, Mayor and Council, and if you have comments or suggestions for me, I would be happy to hear that.
Any comments or questions? Councilor Jefferson?
Um. Yes, uh, we have a close relationship with our native partners. Um, thanks to the mayor or former city administrative council members. So how can we involve our, our native partners in the naming process? Can we send them an email? Um, how can they be, how can their voice be in this process?
Yeah, I think, I think direct contact is, it would, could easily be accomplished. We have, we have an, uh, tribal member on the Parks Commission. Um, who provides input from, from the Nisqually Tribe. Um, we certainly welcome more people on our, our commission from, from the native tribes, but we can outreach them all uh, directly when we go through a process like this.
Right, because it could, it could be a name for the area, so. Um, that, that was my, my major concern, but thank you, Chuck.
You bet.
Uh, and I, and I might also mention there, I, I know of several, uh, tribal members that live within the city limits of Tom Water and, uh, so they definitely could be involved in the process, so. Uh, Councilor Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Chuck, for reviewing all of that. Um. I've been through this process several, several times and, um, you know, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with this, with these procedures. I think this last time, we failed miserably. And, um, we did it partly because we, um, we had an elephant in the process. And the, uh, a person on this council, Charlie Snyder, got the most votes for the, for the park to be named Charlie's Park. And so obviously the team did not want that. And, uh, the council did not want that. So we went to a name that had one. Maybe two, because they got the brother-in-law to also vote. And this person is totally unknown to people in Tom Water. And it, all you have to do is start reading the first thing where there is some significant uh, historical or cultural attributes and they contributed heavily to civic service. Really, all you have to do is read these things like you read them. And the, and the name that we came up with for the park that's, it doesn't, it is not represented in anything that's in, well, not anything, but it's not representative of our procedures either. And I feel that also, um, there was a split vote on council about us suggesting another name. We, we talked about some like um, Prairie Preserve Park or, or some others that different council members mentioned. And we should have sent that back. Because I think we have missed, um, following our own procedures and this, this park doesn't represent anybody or anything that people know in the city of Tom Water. I don't even know what to say to people when they ask me about the name or where we got it or how it happened. And I feel that that's a mistake. The procedures work because we've worked them, we've worked them before. And we've sent things back. We, we've done this and it, and I think they're good. I think it works. We did not do that this time, and I think we were trying to avoid. Um. You know, going with the number one name, and so we went somewhere else, uh, and, uh, and didn't even acknowledge that Charlie got all those votes. And that's a, that's an honor. And, um, and it wasn't his doing. And so anyway, this, this, this thing just doesn't feel right. And I wish that council had stepped up. Um, and, um, and sent this back and had more discussion and, um, done the right thing, because I think, I think we've missed an opportunity. Whether it's a native name or it's a known name or it names the prairie or the preserve, something, something. So that's my more than two cents worth, and I gave this speech before, so I, all I had to do is look it up. And, um, but I'm not, I'm not proud of what the parks were did, and I'm not proud of what the council did. We, we, we missed our mark.
Councilor Jefferson, you turned your mic on. Did you have something?
No, I just wanted to know, what was the reasoning not to name it after someone who is alive? Since Charlie got all those votes, I just didn't know what's the reasoning? Why can't we name it after, you know, a person who's still living? It would be such a, a great honor.
We only did it once. For Jim Brown Park. But that means that there's precedent for it.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, when we developed this policy, we looked at what other cities had done. And naming after someone who had been deceased and maybe deceased for some time gave the value of service over a, a bigger picture of time and what they had done. Um, certainly not to take away from Councilmember Schneider or not. I know he was a little worried about that deceased thing if it were to be named after him. Uh, but, uh, I, I think that was the thinking going into that. And then, and really just immediately after we adopted this, the first park we did was Jim Brown Park, and we named it after him when he was still alive. So um, Joan, you are correct that, that we have set the precedent for it.
So we prefer someone who is deceased, is deceased, but, you know, it depends.
I think we prefer one who has some historical significance and/or the, the, the cultural geographical area of the park. Like part of the thing with Isabella Bush was she was, she was a farmer, you know, she brought seeds and trees and and she farmed and she learned some of her skills from the, from the native people and so on and so forth. So not only was she, you know, the first, the First Lady of Tom Water, um, so to speak, she, she represents what Isabella Bush Park is known for, which is the, or one of the things, which is the farm. So I think we're, um, we're looking for people. We're looking for people to honor. And when you don't know the person or the family or anything, and never even remember, I, many were you saying, Chuck, you know everything about the history of Tom Water and you'd never heard this name before. So.
We, we are working on an interpretive sign for the park, the Kindreds, and not, and not to be, you know, get too far away from talking about the policy and specifically about Kindred Park, but the Kindreds were the bankroll for the Bursonman's Party. They would not have gotten here if it wasn't for the, the Kindred family. Um, which was something significant that the Parks Board talked about, and they also held the first school in their house. Um, also something significant. So the, the Parks Board is really going down the historical significant route when they thought Kindred was a great name.
All right, any, any other comments? So, uh, moving in the future, Chuck will get to do this process, uh, in the beginning of the process so that we will be able to remember what the name of the park is after we, uh, do the ribbon cutting and everything else. Because I, I agree, the whole thing with T Street Park, I still have to think about um, what the name of that park is, because we, and that one was one that we did a lot of work on because it has all of the artwork in it and all of that. So that one even went a few extra steps. So that's why I have difficulty sometimes remembering the name of the park. So I, I agree, doing it at the beginning is, will be very beneficial, so.
What is, what is the name, Mayor?
Uh, to Shute's Valley Park.
I was just seeing if you'd memorized it.
Yeah, I did memorize it, but I have to think of it for a second, so, yeah.
Uh, we have gone through a, a quite extensive public process on the master plan for the park at the former Trails and a Horse Arena site. Uh, and as we move forward and, and time passes a little bit and, and get final approval on that master plan, then uh, before we begin construction, there, we'll go through this for that, for that facility.
Right.
Well, you understand, Chuck, what I'm saying is I, I don't have any, I don't have any issues with the procedures. I think we just need to I think we just learned a lesson about following them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, any other comments? So, thank you, Chuck. Now we are to Mayor City Administrator Report, and I will leave it. Did you want to go first?
If that is your wish, I would be happy to do that.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, I have a couple of things tonight, just, um, some updates as well as some, um, uh, cautionary statements and uh, good news. And so I'm going to start with the good news. So our water resources and state, uh, sustainability staff member Grant Gilmore has, um, recently partnered with the Tom Water School District and the Pacific Education Institute to support the district's Forest and Stream Summer Ecology Field Course. Uh, that's a course for high school students. Um, it was, um, they had sixteen students complete the program, uh, which included a hundred and eighty hours of exposure to forest management practices, which included mapping, uh, stream preservation and restoration and wetland delineation. Um, and the really cool part about this is that the program was initiated based on an objective in Tom Water's Urban Forestry Management Plan, uh, which was to maintain a community and urban forestry education program. So I think it's a great example of, um, uh, Tom Water walking hour talk. Um, so the students didn't, um, they earned a hands-on science experience in natural resources and will receive a full year biology lab credit. Um, they've also had an opportunity to network with professionals in the industry, and they, uh, also received an eighteen hundred dollar stipend. So this Friday, uh, the students are presenting their projects, uh, uh, to celebrate the completion of their work uh, at eleven AM at the New Market Skill Center. And if you are interested in joining the celebration, reach out to Dan Smith for more information. And then a little bit of an advisory, um, also from Dan. So the state, uh, you are probably aware that the state has declared a statewide drought advisory across the state. Uh, we are fortunate in Thurston County that we have not been upgraded to an emergency status as twelve other counties have been. Uh, but water resources staff are monitoring production and consumption in Tom Water daily. Um, recognizing that our water levels in the aquifer are lower than normal this time of year due to lack of rainfall. So we're not in an emergency statu- status yet. Um, we do and would like to encourage everyone to be thoughtful about their water use. Uh, especially with irrigation. So watering earlier in the day, later in the evening, when it's a bit cooler um, and ensuring the plants get water that they need, uh, at those times of the day, uh, checking for leaks. Um, and ensuring that the, you're only using, uh, what you need in terms of keeping your, your, uh, your landscaping healthy. If, uh, conditions change for Tom Water, we will review the Water Shortage Response Plan and, um, take, uh, appropriate action as necessary. Um, so the last couple of things, then, quick updates from transportation side of things. Uh, the Israel Road Water Main Project will begin, it looks like, next week. So, uh, that is intended to go, I believe, through the end of October. Uh, so there will be some, uh, interruptions to transportation corridors that we will all be living through, uh, for the next few months. Um, our pavement, uh, uh, maintenance program is, um, uh, going very well so far. Uh, we've got a great contractor this year. And the I five ramp closure is actually, um, uh, handling way better than expected. So that's good news in terms of the Capitol Boulevard, uh, Trusper, um, project. So uh, with that, I will hand it back to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Um, the uh, thing I want to make mention of is just, uh, doing a reminder since we're doing next week's totally different than what we normally do. Uh, the council meeting because election is on, uh, the primary election is on August first. We are moving the city council meeting to Monday, July thirty first. So, uh, so that is a change. And so in observance to, uh, the, um, uh, election primary, we will, uh, not be meeting on that Tuesday. However, that night is also National Night Out. So there are I think like about, last I heard about eighteen events. So I believe that we will be publishing all the locations shortly, and so that would be a great time to go out into different neighborhoods, uh, and, um, and just connect with, uh, all your neighbors at the National Night Out. So I don't think I have anything else. Uh, Councilmember Kathy?
I, I wanted to, uh, to ask Administrator Parks a question about the water.
Hi. I'm happy to, I'm happy to, um, uh, attempt to answer a question, and I see down in the far right corner of my screen that Dan Smith is here, and he will definitely back me up, I'm sure.
Okay. Does this, um, the shortage of water, uh, or, you know, the things that you gave, which were very good reminders to people about water use and so forth? Does this impact our commitments to development, developments or development?
I do not believe so, but I'm going to turn it over to Dan and he's gonna, uh, help us out.
Hi there. Um, uh, in, in short answer, no, it doesn't affect our commitments to any of our customers, you know, unless we are to activate the Water Shortage Response Plan, and which, which case, we have a series of actions outlined in there from uh, curtailing non, uh, essential irrigation, um, you know, all the way through the gamut, depending on the severity of the emergency. And so right now, we're, like I said, we're, we're like, uh, council, or City Administrator Parks had mentioned, we are, uh, monitoring daily. We haven't hit our trigger points where we would, um, issue those types of warnings. Um, should we get closer to um, reaching those peak limits of our capacity to be able to serve our customers, we'll reach out to first our internal customers, city of Tom Water, you know, is there opportunities to save water? Um, you know, from irrigation in medians or, or, uh, our fields or other areas. And then we'll reach out to school districts and then some of the commercial customers that, um, uh, we can communicate with. The positive news is that when we've had, um, you know, moments like this in the past, um, we've been able to, uh, really kind of make a huge dent in conservation um, with our, with our institutional and commercial partners before reaching even farther, um, to residential customers for curtailment. But you know, as, as Administrator Parks mentioned, you know, some of those simple, um, conservation messages about timing and, uh, when, um, and, you know, using water appropriately and checking for leaks have, you know, s- significant, uh, savings for us.
I'm, I'm more, um, interested in, I, I think that the people of Tom Water respond well when you send out a uh, you know, helpful things. And, you know, I think they're very good citizens about, um, conserving if they need to, and because we've been through this before a little bit. I'm not probably as great as the climate change is now, but, um, but like the commitment that we made to, um, you know, large developments, you know, and the most recent one, you know, out on the court property and so forth. Um, so does this impact our on what we've offered or what we've said, or I have no idea how far along, you know, the, the developments are or development. But, um, how does this water shortage thing impact that at all, i- if at all?
Those developments aren't in play today, and so, you know, unfortunately, it doesn't, I mean, it, it doesn't really have any impact on, on future needs, you know, as this, as the city continues to grow, as we continue to have water demands, the city is looking at, you know, expanding those resources, expanding, you know, conservation practices, it looks at utilizing reclaimed water in different ways and in broader ways. Um, you know, so those are all the facets that are going to affect future development and future capacity. Um, you know, and so as those, as those new, you know, large developments, commercial users come online, um, we work with them to, you know, one, identify the most, you know, conservative uses and efficient use of that water as possible, you know, for them. You know, and then, you know, if we were to be in future situations, you know, today, you know, uh, droughts in the future, you know, again, we'll have the same recommendations that we would today, um, just to a broader audience, um, so to speak. So the city is growing regardless. And so we have a, a duty and a responsibility to expand our water supply. Yeah, you know, those are the pieces that we, you know, we are, um, going to be looking at diligently over the course of the next year and a half, you know, um, as we, as we continue to, you know, one, develop the supplies that we have to, to ensure that we have the capacity and the redundancy, you know, to serve our existing customers. Um, and be resilient in times of drought, uh, like we are today. Uh, and then as we move into future years, making sure that we're using that water in the most efficient ways.
Yeah, because we're, we're, we're heading for for more heat and we're, we're not gonna go backwards. So there's, uh, no question that that's, you're looking at all of that now for the future, because our future is hot. Uh, the other question, thanks, Dan, I appreciate that. Um, the other thing that I wanted to ask about is, uh, the thing where, um, the state talked about us having to cut big swaths of, uh, trees and things from around homes and, um, I- is that part of what you're talking about, that they have, they have changed that and Thurston County is not on that?
No, no, what I, what I, that was related to the, the drought. So, um. The way Dan described it to me is that the state's declared a statewide drought advisory. Um, there are twelve counties within the state where that advisory has been upgraded to an emergency status. So. You know, um, that some of the eastern Washington counties as well as it sounds like even some counties that are, um, that are north of us. But, um, so in those areas where they are experiencing, experiencing, um, much worse, uh, uh, drought conditions. They've been upgraded to an emergency status. And I think, um, you know, Dan, uh, uh, pointed out a lot of really good things about. How we continue to look for, th- th- three things is what I would characterize. We look to, um, maximize the efficiency of our ex- existing sources. We look for opportunities to conserve, um, the water that we're using throughout the community. And we, and we continue to look for and search for new sources of water. So. We're constantly looking at our, um, our comprehensive water system plan and looking, uh, way out into the future, trying to estimate neat need. Based on the land uses that we've identified for our urban growth area. And then as developments come along, they're authorized in the context of that future planning. So, um, I think the city's done a great job of. Um, looking at those water resource plans. Um, they're very much, um, uh, regulated, uh, and guided by, um, uh. State requirements in terms of water system planning. Um, and I think they are helpful to us to stay ahead of. You know, as these drought conditions become more prevalent, perhaps, uh, uh, due to climate change. We're hopefully accommodate, accommodating for that and being considerate of that as, as we are continuing to update our plan for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years down the road. So hopefully we can continue to stay in front of, um, in front of the, the projected need as well as in front of. Staying in front of these potential conditions that create challenges for us.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. You're sounding like a planner.
Full disclosure, that's, that's what I am.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Great, great. If there is nothing else this evening, um. I will say that this meeting is adjourned and thank you, everyone, and, uh, go out and enjoy the sunshine. Thank you.